All right, with that, we will move on to public hearings. So our one public hearing tonight is 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Housing. We have the staff report, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Happy New Year to you. So we are first starting with 3706 San Pablo Avenue Affordable Project. As you know, this is on the southeast corner of what we are calling the Star Intersection on the southern portion of the city. It's about a little over an acre site, and it is split between Oakland and Emeryville, where majority of the site is in Emeryville, and Oakland has ceded jurisdiction to Emeryville for both the planning entitlements as well as the building permits. In terms of a little background, this property was purchased by the redevelopment agency, and as part of its dissolution, it was transferred to the city to be developed in accordance with the redevelopment plan. And in last year, an ERN was approved by the council with the EH, the current developer, with the following provisions: that it would be 87-unit rental housing for low and very low-income households, an average unit size of a little over 1,000 square feet, an average of 2.29 bedrooms per unit, set asideing of 11 units for special needs populations, and that the project should include amenities like community space, outdoor courtyard, and landscape spaces, and commercial space fronting San Pablo Avenue. The commission reviewed this project at a study session in October. The project was generally well-received by you, and you felt that it was of a high-quality design, and the variety in programming of the open space and the unit mix was appreciated. The commission did not see a problem with making the findings for providing parking above the maximum allowed by the planning regulations. And the commission wanted to see the courtyard elevations as part of the packet, as well as street-side elevation that showed the mass building. The commission also recommended participation in the AC Transit EZ Pass program and inclusion of a grease interceptor in the commercial space. So this is the project. This is the ground floor. You see about a little less than 7,000 square feet of a commercial retail space fronting San Pablo. So this is San Pablo here, 37th Street at the bottom, and West MacArthur at the top. There are three townhomes along MacArthur, and the lobby and the amenity areas is at this corner of San Pablo and MacArthur. And you have a parking garage at the back with some bike parking, as well as a bike It's a two-level parking garage, and on the third floor, you have a courtyard space, and each unit, each floor has laundry, as well as a community or a teen room or some community amenity on each level, as well as laundry hookups at each level. The fourth, fifth plans are similar, and you can see the laundry hookups here, and there's a storage facility. The sixth floor, in addition to the laundry and the storage areas, also has a little sky deck, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. In terms of unit mix, this is the unit mix and the size. This has remained unchanged from the previous study session. This kind of tells you the cross-sections. You can see there are two levels of parking with four levels of units. The maximum height that this building reaches is 73 feet. These are some of the San Pablo elevations, on the top, and 37th elevation on the bottom. There's a mix of materials: stucco, fiberglass cement lap siding, fiberglass cement panels, and brick veneer. And the applicant will talk a little bit more about their idea, the design concept, between the mix of colors and materials. These are the MacArthur Boulevard elevation at the top, and this is the rear elevation of the building facing east. This landscape plan, no trees are being removed as part of this project. Two additional trees on San Pablo will be installed. There are about two new ones on MacArthur, and there'll be six new ones on 37th Street. If you recall, there's this little space here, which at the study session, there was an issue as to the use of this space. A dog run was at that time proposed, but the adjacent neighbor had an issue with the dog run. So what is being proposed right now is a bocce ball court. And what we also have here is a vegetable garden. This is the amenity plan on the ground floor. Other than the reception and the lobby areas, you also have a club room, you have fitness center, you have a homework room, and also you have office space. This is the courtyard landscape plan. This is a combination of a central courtyard. There's an overlook facing San Pablo, got a zen garden concept, and there's also a community room at this level. This is sort of the sky deck. It's installed with outdoor kitchen and dining area, as well as lounge area. These are some of the photosims that have been prepared for the project. These are the different viewpoints that you're going to see. This is the location, this is before. This is the mass building. This is on San Pablo. And this is after. This is before, West MacArthur looking west. And that's the after. And you can see the mass, the new proposed mass building as well. It's not very clear, but it's there. This is before, and that's after. This is the lane splitter. And this is after, and you see the mass building here. This is before, and that's after. This is on 37th Street, and this is after. In terms of the zoning district that this is in, the base zone is M U R S, which is mixed-use with residential south. There are three other overlay zones: neighborhood retail, transit hub, and pedestrian priority overlay. The use classification is a multi-unit residential, which is allowed by right. The commercial uses, at this point, they have not identified specific tenants, but they hope to include some combination of retail, food establishment, and space for art galleries. The size of this site is over one acre, so the whole project would need a conditional use permit. The base density at this site is 85 units per acre, and they are below the base density at 77.3. The floor area, the base is two, and the bonus is three. They are below the bonus, and they're within the base at 1.87. The base height is 55, with bonus height is 73. So they do, their height is 73, so they do need to provide bonus points of 90. So the applicant has identified the following categories in terms of how they're going to obtain 90 bonus points. One is energy efficiency. They have made the commitment to exceed the California Energy Code by 10%. They have also made the commitment to obtain LEED gold or equivalent, which gives them 25 points. They have made the commitment to provide free transit passes, one per unit. And as this is 100% affordable housing project, we believe that the project also qualifies under the flexible public benefit category for at least 20 points. In terms of these commitments, these commitments have been incorporated as conditions of approval. So we will make sure at various stages where it is relevant, particularly the building permit stage, to make sure that these things are happening. Parking. So in terms of parking for this project, this is, as I'd mentioned, it is in the transit hub zone, which reduces the required parking by 50%. In addition, this is 100% affordable units, which reduces the estimate demand by another half. So when you calculate, the required residential is between 37 to 47 spaces, and the proposed is 108. This means that they do need a use permit for parking more than, providing more than the maximum. At this point, since the commercial tenants are not yet identified, we cannot calculate that, but the commercial space is just a little under 7,000, a little under 7,000 square feet. And by our local, by our planning regulations, anything that is local serving commercial uses of 5,000 square feet or less in the neighborhood retail overlay zone, it does not trigger any parking, so it's just an extra 1,000 square feet that would require parking. Bicycle parking required is one short-term and 87 long-term. They are providing, they're exceeding the required minimums by providing five short-term and 96 long-term. In terms of, there are other parking-related standards in our planning regulations relating to stall dimensions, aisle widths, loading, and electrical vehicle charging stations. The project meets all these requirements, and these have been outlined in the staff report, so I'm not going to go into details at this point. In addition, there are the standards relating to open space, courtyard, trash, and recycling requirements. Again, how they comply are detailed in the staff report, and they do comply. Design guidelines, this is just a few of the guidelines that the project complies with. Other guidelines are outlined in the staff report. So there are certain findings that the commission needs to make today. One is the use permit findings for bonus height. And the finding is that the proposed project will provide public benefits, whoops. This is going to be an issue.
Should I go off again?
Yeah, I should have printed it out. Okay. So you guys can see the slides?
Yeah.
What is the last slide there?
Findings.
Findings, use permit findings for bonus height.
Public benefit, totally 90% are provided through LEED certification or equivalent is where we are.
Somebody mind if we turn off your screens a little bit, so we can see it out here? And you can share with your name?
Is that going to work? It's short.
It's going to work very well.
It's good in there.
There you go.
Yay!
Get your binoculars out.
Okay, so I'll just go ahead.
That's good.
So in terms of the findings that you need to make for the use permit, the use permit findings for bonus height is, like I'd mentioned, they need 90 bonus points, and the way they are proposing to do that is by providing, committing to LEED gold certification, exceeding the California Energy Code by 10%, providing free transit passes per unit, and also the fact that it's providing a flexible public benefit in terms of providing 100% of affordable units. The other use permit findings that are, that need to be made is for parking, they're providing more parking than is allowed, than the maximum that is permitted. It's, I believe, from 47 is the maximum that they're allowed, and they're providing 108. So the finding that you need to make is that the applicant has convincingly demonstrated that additional parking is required to meet the anticipated parking demand of the post users. One of the reasons why the required parking is so low is because it qualifies for two reductions: one, the fact that it is in the transit hub, and the other, the fact that it's 100% affordable housing. This is also a family-friendly project, and family-friendly, and family-friendly units typically require more parking than is, than non-friendly friendly. And the applicant, who is an affordable housing developer, in his, in their other projects in the Bay Area, have, have felt that this is the amount of parking that is usually typically needed for a project of this size. In addition, there is also some commercial space for which we have not accounted for the parking, so that would, the additional parking would add to that. The other finding that you need to make is that there is, there is not an overreliance on automobiles, and it will not adversely affect transit, bicycle, or pedestrian access to the site-adjacent users. As I'd mentioned before, they do provide free transit passes to all units, and this will promote the use of transit in the area. They also, as part of this project, will be making improvements along their frontages, including sidewalks, and that would improve pedestrian environment, and they also provide more bicycle parking than is required. Okay. So in addition to these findings, you also have your normal major, major conditional use findings. And these are general findings in terms of the compatibility of the project to the general plan, to design guidelines, to adjacent neighborhood, and the fact that the design is of high quality, and how they, how the project meets. These, these various findings are outlined in the resolution that was attached in the staff report. We have also conducted a traffic study for this project, which was attached to the staff report. The study identified no major impacts. They did have some recommendations regarding to site circulation, and these recommendations have been incorporated as conditions of approval in your packet. So that concludes my presentation. The applicant also has a presentation, and I'm not sure how that will occur, unless we can, yeah, I can't think of anything.
Is it on the hand dryer?
Oh, it's on there.
Well, just treat it as if that was the projector.
You want to try the switch again, because the light turned red up there. It was yellow before.
Oh, it did? Okay, well.
Can you see?
Before we invite the applicant up, do we have any questions for staff?
Does it reach that far?
Keep an eye on it if it goes out.
Oh, okay, then it reaches that far.
Maru, I, I do have a question. So I was a little confused. I think the staff report and the Fair and Peers study referenced 115 parking spaces.
Yes, I think I forgot to mention that. That is an error. They, the current parking count that is being proposed is 108 and not 115. They did some little, they did some rearranging and reduced it to make the parking garage more workable.
Okay, thank you.
So just for the record, I'd like to make the changes to the staff report and the resolution and the conditions of approval, changing 115 to 108.
Thanks. Any other questions for staff? All right, great, we'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Chairman Moss and Planning Commissioners. I feel like I have a rush here to get through this before it turns off again. But I wanted to give you kind of a progress update that's not necessarily directly related to planning, but where we are with this project. We have secured some county home and CDBG money last year, and we've, we applied this year for the boomerang funds that are available. We've applied for the Oakland NOFA, the state's infill and infrastructure grant, and we are going to be applying for the Housing Authority of County of Alameda for 12 units of Section 8, project-based Section 8, as well as the Federal Home Loan Banks HP program in March. So it's been, it's been very busy, and staff has been working really well with us and moving this along as well, because we're in need of the DDA, as well as the entitlements for some of these applications to, to make them happen this year. We've also spoken to a lot of the subcommittees, as well as the neighbors, and we've taken a lot of the feedback from them, you know, in addition to the study session with the planning commission. And I want to highlight just the three key changes since the last time we were up here. So the first one is around the parking. Our current parking count is 108, and we are very adamant about keeping that count as high as possible. In our conversations with the neighbors, they have expressed great concern about not overloading the parking in the immediate, the street parking in the immediate area, where current parking is already very tight. And we believe that we've designed, you know, a very smart way to resolve that issue. We have the lower deck, which is shown here, that's, that has a gate that's about two-thirds into the parking area. So behind that gate are 28 residential stalls. They're reserved for the residents of the property. Upstairs, in the second deck of parking, all of these 57 parking stalls are reserved for either staff or the, or the residents. The tandem stalls there are reserved for staff. So there's slightly less than one-to-one parking. We're planning to unbundle the parking, so we're not, we're not going to assign, and we're going to rely on, I think, the special needs units, the studios and one-bedrooms, where we have people with developmental disabilities and/or people with, suffering from AIDS, to, and some other households to not have vehicles. But I think our parking is at 83 or so within the residential area. Then downstairs, the, there are 23 stalls in the parking area that's open. That's the southeast corner of the parking area in front of you. Five of those stalls are really reserved for particular uses. Three of them are electric vehicle charging stations. So if no residents have electric vehicles, those stalls are going to be empty. And, you know, we're not going to encourage people to park in them unless they have electric vehicles. So those kind of are set aside. There are two stalls that are for car share. So again, those are not going to be accessible to either the residents or the commercial use. And then, in our feedback from the potential commercial tenants, they did say that parking is very important for them, for their businesses, so we want to make sure there is some parking for that. Now, during the nighttime, when the, when the commercial space is essentially closed, those stalls then become open to the residents, and that's how we're going to address some of the, some of the overflow parking. So it's a kind of a dual-use area. We believe the 108 is absolutely necessary, and we hope that you approve the increased number of parking stalls. This is the, oh, the second major change that you see on this ground floor plan is that the arcade along San Pablo Avenue is now no more. So after some feedback from various departments and, as well as the police, that frontage has been pushed closer to the street, and it's enlarged the interiors slightly for the commercial space and also for our leasing amenity space. And then we'll get to the perspectives where you can see how the street treatment is still very, very elegant and, and human scale. So that leads us to, whoop, sorry. And this is the kind of updated amenities area where Maru had already referred to the reception area, the clubhouse. But now, the demonstration kitchen, the wall behind the demonstration kitchen connecting to the homework room, which is modular, can be opened. So you can create a larger space that spans the clubhouse with the homework room for larger events. The fitness center has enlarged a little bit, the office, then there's the two restrooms and the maintenance office. Let's see. Okay. So the third change that you can see here, and we'll come back to that as well, is the outdoor retreat area next to the single-family residence. So now, there is a very small piece of lawn that, on, you're on the way to a bocce court that stretches pretty much the entire length of the strip. And then there's some passive landscaping along the fence to screen, and we believe this kind of more passive use is more appropriate for the neighborhood. So those are the three major changes, and then I'll sweep through this. You have this, well, not that fast. You have this in your packet. This is the courtyard level. We have relocated the teen room and the office, the service coordinator office, to the corridor, which leads to the exit from the courtyard. The laundry has also changed, because there is now the space for the shaft down to the commercial space for flue in case a restaurant moves in. Why is this changing on me? Okay. All right. Let's see, yeah, okay. So otherwise, things are pretty similar to the last time you saw them. So these are some perspectives. This is the perspective of the corner of San Pablo and 37th. You can see the two vehicular entrances and the ground treatment along the 37th Avenue, and then the street frontage with the new commercial space that's pushed out to the sidewalk. This is the perspective on the corner of MacArthur and San Pablo. You can see that slightly taller ground floor space, that's our 20-foot podium for the two parking decks. On 37th, on MacArthur. Oh, the exterior staircase is also new that you see here. That's an egress from the zen garden on top. This provides fire access directly to our podium deck without going through the interior of the building. It is gated, so that's not publicly accessible. This is the frontage on San Pablo. You see the overlook here, as well as the corridors that pass from one side to the other. We've also done some perspectives relative to the neighborhood. This is an aerial of, well, at the southwest corner. An aerial of the northeast corner. And no idea what that is. We've got our elevations. Okay, so these are the interior shots that were requested by the commission. This is the interior shot looking at the east side of the building, where you can see the corridors above, and you see the pass-through down here going into the zen garden. This is where the lounge would be. Those are units. This is an area, this is a perspective from the fifth story, looking down at the courtyard. And you can see on the other side, the open corridors connecting the two structures, as well as the overlook.
While you're on this page, I have a question regarding this, and it might be kind of nitpicky or something, but the laundry room areas, are they not kind of where the picnic tables or the dining tables are there to the right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go up to the top, that shows a balcony. Is that not still a laundry room, and does that, is there not a balcony there? Shouldn't that be shown coming up equal to the other windows?
I believe there's enough space in the laundry to make a balcony out of it.
Okay, it didn't show on the floor plans of that laundry room that there would be a balcony there?
Probably, well, I would defer to the architects. But, actually, can we go back?
The laundry room.
Excuse me, you need to come up to the microphone, please.
So this is, this is the top-story floor plan.
Right.
You're correct. The footprint doesn't show that balcony space right now, but that laundry room is big enough to incorporate a deck off of it.
Oh, cool. So that would have that particular laundry room, will have some outdoor space as well. Awesome.
They actually do that on all floors. But, so, so you can see that this is the laundry room, and there are room, and there are, I believe, four machines in there. And there's plenty of space for utilizing that kind of end there. Uh-oh, that's it. All right. My time's up. So, okay. So the courtyard perspective, and then there are the floor plans. No radical changes there. This is the landscape plan. And you can see in more detail, in color, the very small piece of lawn and the bocce court, the passive use, the landscape plan for the courtyard level, the sky deck, and then the imagery that we've used previously for some of the potential features representative. So I think that's all for our presentation to keep it short. The architects and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Could you go over in a little bit more detail? There was one, I guess it's not a slide anymore, one screen that showed the frontage that is no longer an arcade. And...
On the perspective?
Keep going back a little bit. There we are. So is there any depth in the fenestration there? It looks sort of like there's an angled...
Yeah. There is. It's slightly deeper by probably, what, three feet or something? Two feet. And then at the base, there's a slight angle there.
And that's concrete down there?
Looks like it.
I just had a couple of questions or kind of a statement for staff and then a question for you. So on your unbundled parking, the unbundled part will be just in the 23 spaces that are unsecured?
No, the unbundled parking is for the residential parking.
Entire building. Okay. So this is where I have a recommendation or a problem or something to recommend to staff is with the residents being concerned about parking on the street. I live in a building that has over 1,000 parking spaces for 525 units, and people park everywhere but in the garage because it's convenient to park on the street. It's closer to their unit. So to me, I don't have a problem with you having 108 spaces. But what I think is that as a city, we need to do some kind of management system to our parking or something because those spaces are going to, the street's parking is going to be used before the third floor of the parking structure is, especially if it's not a needed place because everyone's going to grab the prime spaces. And then they're going to go up to the floor. And then by the time they get up to the floor, they're going to say, forget it, I'm going to park on the street. So as a recommendation, I think the city needs to do something about parking management on the street because no matter how many spaces you have in this garage, people are going to take the easy spots on the street before they take anything else.
I think there are a couple of factors in play here that may make this slightly different. Because we have a singular point of entry on the corner of San Pablo and MacArthur, parking on the street is not particularly convenient because you still have to go walk all the way around or walk through the garage in order to get to the entry. There's no doors fronting the sides. But parking the garage is convenient because you have direct access to the two elevators that go up to the residential units. So it's also protected, gated, and, you know, your shelter from rain, sun. I believe people will use the residential area.
Our garage is the same way. And there's one point of entry into it. And so I think, I don't want to make this a condition of approval, but I think as a city, we need to monitor this. And that if it becomes a problem that because these people are parking on the street and taking places when they have plenty inside, we need to mitigate that problem somehow.
And we'll have a parking management plan when we get closer to actually getting the project financed. But we're happy to work with the city if you want to put any kind of permit parking. We've talked about this with the neighbors as well, that the neighbors would receive the passes for the permit parking, that our residents will not.
How about motorcycle parking?
There were, I believe, two, two or four stalls in some of the spaces in the garage that are kind of not quite big enough for a car stall that we've designated for motorcycle.
So just two or four?
Two or four.
For the whole project?
Yes.
Have you found that to be sufficient in your other projects? That ratio?
I don't, we don't have a lot of motorcycles generally in our developments. But I think we can probably look for some more kind of corner pocket spaces.
Yeah, like 213 or that had a little extra by the utility room or something. Yeah, it just seems like as it goes, I feel like I see more motorcycles out there, just as a way to get around that's inexpensive and reasonable and doesn't take as much space.
Okay. There is a strip on the second deck on the north side of the parking where it lines up with the bottom, but there's an extra space because there's no corridor. That could be an area where people can park their motorcycles as well.
Could you talk a little bit about the ground and second-floor parking at the rear of the building, the one that's just got a 10-foot setback from an existing residence? Because that residence on Agar Street, no, 37th Street, there's a lot of windows along that side. And I'm concerned about whether there's going to be car lights and, you know, intrusion from the garage to that house.
The garage, the building itself is closed. There is ventilation, and there are screens. And I think there's a perspective that shows that. But I don't think car lights will go through the building. The screens are high enough that the car lights should not go through.
Right. From the perspective, it was hard to tell whether, you know, how much visible light was going to be coming through, whether it's light from the garage, you know, interior lighting itself, or a light from the headlights. It seemed like that could be a problem for the people living next door.
Okay. I'm not finding the perspective on this one, but... Do we have a shot of this?
You go to the street.
Oh, right. Here we go.
Windows street, sorry.
Yeah. This is, this is the facade that would face our neighbors.
It looked like it could be windows or it could be a screen.
There are screens. Yeah. With metal on it. So we'll make sure that at the bumper height, you know, we'll block that off.
And that there's some kind of screening that will diffuse the light inside the parking garage, too?
Yeah. The parking garage light should be directed inside, not spreading. But I'm also forgetting what the fence barrier would be along that edge.
I believe it's just a wood fence.
Solid?
Yeah, I think it's a solid wood fence.
Okay. So that should help as well, if it's a solid fence.
Two stories to that building, I believe, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because there's that 10-foot, 10-foot green space between our garage and the next building.
Right.
And then there's a fence on the, in between the two properties.
I have a question about the corridors. So I noticed on the, the bridge between the two sides of the building looks open. But there weren't any, I didn't see on the floor plan any doorways between that and, or any doors shown between that and the hall, you know, what sort of looked like interior hallways. Are those, are those interior space or not?
They are, they would be considered unconditioned space. And they are open to the open air. And that was designed intentionally for fresh air and for reducing operating costs and not having it conditioned.
In the courtyard renderings and elevations, there, and I guess even the, the main, the facade on San Pablo, you can see the bridges, I guess, and the balconies that have, appears to be a wood siding or a wood rail. Can you tell us what the material is for the rails like there?
I believe that's siding, right?
It's wood. Yeah. So where you're actually seeing the open catwalk corridor, we would propose a wood rail.
A wood?
A wood rail where you're seeing kind of the wide board slats. And there, of course, would be probably a metal top rail and then metal vertical pickets that support the horizontal wood members. But where you're actually seeing the horizontal slats, that is a wood rail.
Okay. And does the, I just want to make sure. I saw the photograph of this chessboard play area with chess pieces. And then the rendering is just a checkerboard pattern. Will this actually have chess pieces?
I'm sure it will have chess pieces. I don't know if we'll keep it out all the time. But they'll probably be in the office or the music room if it's not out.
One more question. The, one thing I noticed on the, you know, kind of the cover page rendering, is that there's some, you know, and I realized this is a certain time of day and whatever, but there's some kind of color variation that's shown in the fiber panel, you know, around, on kind of the top level and around the side. And it gives a really kind of nice warmth to the, to the building. I was, and then looking at your material board, it looked like that was all one color fiber panel. Is that right?
So the front image is way back from our original RFQ. That was the rendering from the RFQ from a year and a half ago. So we realized that things have changed in terms of like the building configuration and things like that. Like in that case, the arcade's still there.
Okay.
So we're going to talk to a contractor to see if we can get some variation on the fiber cement boards at the installation. But for now, it's just fiber cement boards. And it may be a uniform color, but we may try to do something there where we pre-paint it a slightly different color before we install.
Okay. Thanks.
Do you know if, I mean, I know some manufacturers of the fiber cement lap siding have like a faux wood, where it actually has variation, looks like wood. I mean, do you know if the manufacturer you're looking at provides that option?
There's a couple of manufacturers that do provide that option. And there's different composite boards and things out there. I think as Felix and his team works through the financing and the budgets, we'll have a better understanding of what material can actually be selected, if that can be upgraded. Right now, on all of our renderings and on the material board, you're seeing a fiber cement board because we know that we can actually provide that. And we're confident that we can make that look good. So that's why you're seeing that material. But we'll continue to explore those options.
Also, I mean, I think before, maybe it was in there and I wasn't clear on what the windows were. And now I'm realizing they're all vinyl. And I understand the cost, you know, reasons for that. But I'd like to, I mean, do you guys have any kind of sense of the profile, what the manufacturing profile is for those windows? I mean, this is a, it's a pretty sort of, you know, you're going for a pretty stately industrial sort of approach. And a lot of the vinyl window manufacturers, the profiles are more kind of classic colonial or some, you know, have a lot of, a lot of shadow lines and things like that that aren't really represented here and probably would look strange if that were the case. And I didn't know if you had a profile in mind.
Yeah. We're finding more and more with the vinyl window manufacturers that you can get different frame options, that they have different lines within their product line, that some are thicker and some are thinner. And you'll notice that we're showing those vinyl windows of color. Still trying to keep them looking very contemporary and modern and urban for this context, that we're not showing a white vinyl window in these renderings or in the board. So the intent with showing that dark vinyl is that it, you know, is the same quality as a metal window or any other window that you would see out there. And then we'll work on the sizes and along with our window manufacturer to make sure that we can provide the sizes that we're showing and break them up accordingly. And that's kind of to be developed.
Ideally, I mean, as the developer, I would prefer to use the style line series from Milgard, which is very simple, low-profile and kind of clean lines. That series may or may not be sufficient for the size of windows that we have and the type of configurations we have. But the next lineup is Montecito, and that one also has very fairly clean lines. It's a little bit thicker profile.
And these windows open, yes?
Yes.
Where? On, say, on the front San Pablo elevation? It's hard to know.
The side panel?
Sort of the narrow side panels, long one?
Yeah, exactly. The, yeah, the long, the middle smaller pieces will be open.
And they would...
The big, you know, not the fixed pane.
They would open. They would not, it's not a...
It's not, it's not a hung window. We're debating about whether that can be built as a slider. That's my preference. And if not, it would have to be casemate.
And are those vinyl windows sufficient for sound attenuation?
Yes.
From San Pablo?
Yeah. So we'll do that study as well. We've put in vinyl that's double-pane, that's as high as 34 STC. And if we have to go higher than that, we'll go triple-pane on vinyl. And the standard that we put in, I think, is about 28 STC.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will go ahead and open the public hearing for this project. If anyone would like to speak on this project, 3706 San Pablo Avenue, please come forward.
Okay. First, I'd like to say that the site is within a general plan identified transit hub. And this transit hubs have been determined by the city of Emeryville, by the people of the city of Emeryville, to be one of the salient points of a transit hub is there's projects within that or housing development within that. Those districts are to have less parking. So market forces being such that they are, who here could guess that our transit hub would be subverted, as we've been shown here tonight, as it is being subverted? Who could guess that? And the answer to that question is anybody that pays attention to politics in Emeryville. So that's kind of cynical. Why have a, why have a transit hub with the provisions that there'd be less parking if you're not going to enforce it, other than the fact that this is Emeryville? Change the subject now. New subject. Miru was talking about the bonus points for this project. As a courtesy to the seven of you, the six of you should know that the city council is talking about completely changing the bonus point concept here in Emeryville because it's thoroughly outdated and being, essentially being manipulated to our detriment, our being the people of Emeryville's detriment, by developers. And so the city council is talking about completely revamping that. And so you may want to find out about that before you just march blindly ahead with the bonus point concept. Because that's being revamped as we speak, as we speak. The retail component of this project, we heard that they hope to include a bunch of stuff that sounds wonderful. Well, that's what we get with every development here, hope to include. And what we wind up with are mattress stores and formula retail, fast food. I just, I mean, how many times do we have to be fooled before we finally say, well, it's going to be what this developer wants to put there rather than what we want? So I think we should put what we want insofar as the law allows us to do. And so that would mean we need to get this in writing. So it might be that we ask the developer to subsidize the kind of retail that we want. And insofar as the law allows us to do that, why wouldn't we do that? I have more points, but this clock is stopping me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ride Henme. I'm a resident of Emeryville and also an architect who's by virtue of perspective completed about 3,000 units of multifamily housing, most of which are affordable. I wanted to speak in favor of the project because I think it's highly competently done and provides badly needed affordable housing in Emeryville. And I think, and I speak in support of the concessions. A few points that I wanted to mention. One is I'm very glad that the arcade from the retail has been eliminated. I think it's a bad idea to have arcades like that. It makes the retail much more visible from the street and much more viable as arcade. As retail, I would suggest that the signage for the retail seen on the southwest perspective, for example, the blade sign, that is signs perpendicular to the street, not parallel to the street, are the most important in terms of visibility. And so you, I would suggest the applicant start considering how that corner can really start to make that retail highly visible. Because as we all know, retail is very difficult to make viable in these situations. Second point I would make is I hope that you will require that colored vinyl do be used because I think the white or beige vinyl is going to really hurt the building. And it is an upcharge. So I think it's important that the black or dark-colored vinyl be used. And the last point is a suggestion coming at a very late point in the design, I understand. But that is if the open roof deck were on the southwest corner rather than on the southeast corner, perhaps the, what I would suggest is that the roof parapet be the same, that it be opened up. You'd need a glass wall in order to provide the windbreak from the west. But that would make this highly visible on the most visible corner of these coming from the south. It would turn the corner. You'd see it from both the south as well as from the, from San Pablo. It would allow you incredible view of San Francisco as well as to the south. And there's five bedrooms in the east corner and five bedrooms in the west corner. west corner, although there's three units in the west corner. So it may be a difficult thing to do, but it could become a real icon or a really strong design statement for the building itself. So, thank you.
My name's Darrell Rush. I own the building straight across the street. And I've been to practically every meeting regarding this building and been available for all of them. And up till now, my understanding was it's going to be a 55-foot tall building. And I come here tonight and see it's going to be a 73-foot tall building. Was that, and so I mean, I would be opposed to that. 55 feet was just fine. That's my, other than that, it's great design and I was supportive of it. I talked to the developer once a while back. He called and told him I was supportive of it, but not the 73 feet. So, I mean, the points that you're talking about are pretty abstract. Then they should be included anyway, regardless of the building height. Just, they're perfectly rational things to do. Anyway, that's my objection to it, though.
Hi, my name is Betty. I live right in the back of the building that they're going to create. I have talked to the developments a lot about certain things that was going to go on. And we have worked together in the neighborhood. But I do have some concerns about the townhouses just going straight across because that's adjacent of my backyard. And how much privacy are they going to be able to look down now since this done went up another couple feet? Because it did start off at five feet. And another concern is I have a sign right there that's on my yard that I'm not, I'm not in, it's owned by Clear Channel, but it's in my yard. So if they build the townhouses on top, how is that going to interfere there? And my other concern is the writing on the building. What are they going to do about that? And the retail, because on that street that they're talking about, that parking, the street sweeper sweeps it every morning at 3:00 a.m. So I don't think they can park there anyway because the street people sweep at 3:00 a.m. in the morning. So, and where's the garbage going to be at too? Because my house faces all this stuff. I don't want to smell garbage either.
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Oh, sorry, we will not quite close the public hearing yet.
Hi, my name is Nick Nikotaris. My dad owns the Bank Club Building on 39th and San Pablo. So parking has definitely become a challenge. So more parking is definitely better. For the community, my question is, will the parking still remain on San Pablo for commercial use, the street parking in front of this building on San Pablo? Does anybody have an answer to that question?
Would you like us to respond, Chair Moss?
Sure.
I believe the on-strike parking will remain. Is that correct?
Yeah, that was my only question, but definitely more parking is definitely better. That's it. That's my question.
Any other speakers? Would the applicant like to respond to anything before we close the public hearing?
Hi.
You can click the screen again if you want.
So for, in terms of the retail, sir, we're not underwriting the commercial space. This is a nonprofit development. We are not underwriting it for lending purposes. And we're going to work with the city to choose the tenant of your choice that's really going to benefit the neighborhood. We have that liberty and I would like to exercise that. We're looking at, you know, nonprofits or, you know, our first conversation was with Habitat, which is a children's museum. But they want some outdoor space and it didn't work for them. But that's kind of the line of thinking that we're going on. In terms of the sky deck location, we chose the southeast corner partly because it was a, it was a good design feature for our neighbor to the east. Their home is, you know, if you look at the, let's see. So their home is right here, 10 feet away from our building. And it's a two-story structure. So at this point, with the reduced height, they, their sunlight will be a little bit better than had we gone with the six stories there. In terms of the height, the top of the building, I believe is at 60, 65, is that right? 65 feet or so. And that has been that way since before, well, since the last study session, it's been that way. The 73 is the top of the elevator tower, which is a protrusion from the roof. The sky deck is one story lower, so that's at somewhere under 60. But that's, that's kind of how this mathing ended up. But we'll talk a little bit more about that. The townhouses, let's see, where am I? Sorry. The townhouses are on the ground floor. So they're, they're right here along the facing MacArthur. And so the, this didn't change since the last time. It's still, it's capped off at the top of the townhouse on the left there. That's where the Zen Garden is, it's two stories up. So if they look out, they will see the roof of the house next door. And then it goes from there. The rest of the units are here, set back another 20 feet. The garbage is on 37th. And it is situated between the two vehicular entries so that that's the, that's where the garbage is located and where it will be picked up. There's a chute that goes up the four stories where people would drop their garbage and recycling. So I think those are the points I want, at least wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will bring this back for discussion. Mr. Gunkel, you want to get us started?
Sure.
Thank you. So, yeah, I guess some of my questions sort of lead to comments. I do, I do feel like the main, the front rendering with the, I don't know if at that time you were thinking of an E-Pay rain screen or something along those lines, but it definitely has a richness that's lost when using the prefinished cementitious siding. And so I'd like to see something brought back that at least gives that level of character. I, again, with the vinyl windows, I mean, it sounds like you're on the right track, but it, you know, maybe it could be a condition of approval that the vinyl windows, when they're, you know, once a decision's made, that they're submitted to the staff for review, primarily that they are of a design that still feels, I mean, while being vinyl is, you know, still feels of quality and doesn't have too many shadow lines where it sort of circumvents the rest of the aesthetic approach of the building. When I look at, there's not really a roof plan, but there is a aerial sort of rendering. And I see in that, that a lot, like initially I was looking at the elevations and I would see that the different, what looked like a mass in one elevation, then I'd look at a courtyard and I'd see that it wasn't carried through. And that made me, you know, realize, looking at the aerial rendering, that a lot of these are just parapets that you're pulling back a little bit to give the impression of a mass or a volume. And I think it's key that the, if that's the approach and you can't get them to line up from courtyard out to the, out to the facades, that they be brought back far enough that there's no risk of what we see all over the place, especially in like strip malls, where they only take it back a few feet and you can see from the street that it's just a fake, fake volume. I'm still seeing in the courtyard, well, a couple of things with the courtyard. I mean, starting to see, now that we can see the renderings of the courtyard, it seems like a lot of the attention to detail that was placed in the facade treatments on the four, you know, the four primary facades, didn't really carry into the courtyard. And it's really, it becomes pretty stark, an obvious like stark difference where you can see the small portions at the east and west ends where the materials from the exterior facades are carried in. And then where they meet the rest of the courtyard, which is basically all plaster and just starts to feel a little bit more kind of office park-like and cold. And I've been, I mean, we did some field trips to some affordable housing developments. And there were definitely some that we saw where the courtyards were not treated well and felt cold and no one utilized them. And it's really going to be key. I mean, the court, as much as we care about the streets and how this engages the streets and the neighborhood, we also care about how this is going to be, you know, a vital place for the residents of the building. And so, you know, if, and that, that's not just in the uses and the amenities that are placed in those courtyards, but also how that courtyard's treated. And so I'd really like to see some of the higher quality materials that you're utilizing elsewhere in the building brought into the courtyard, at least in some accents or something along those lines that start to give it a little bit more warmth than it currently seems to have. And I, the one comment about the, what is it, the sky deck, and I guess what I always saw, when I saw the renderings of the, of the San Pablo elevation, and you've got that, that cut through the building right at the middle with the lights hanging over it, and it feels like this great place where people walking down the street will, you know, get a sense of the life that's happening inside the building. I kind of, I guess I always imagined that would be this sort of hub, the adult hub. I think the last time you sort of presented the primary courtyard as the, you know, family-friendly area with kids, you know, play structures, et cetera, and this would be more adult lounge. But then when I'm actually looking at the landscape plans, I'm seeing a focal element. And then when I look at the photos of what a focal element is, it's like an art piece that's lit up. And then there's a handful of couches and tables and chairs around. Whereas the sky lounge has your fire pit and your barbecue, your outdoor kitchen, all those kinds of things. All the things that I guess I was envisioning happening at that, at that adult lounge. And I guess my concern is, as cute as you make the adult lounge look, if there's nothing really to draw anyone to it, it's going to end up becoming a place where, you know, people go to talk on the cell phone or work on their laptop. And it's not going to be this, this sort of introduction of life carried from the courtyard and the building out to the street. So in a lot of ways, I'd love to see that, that adult lounge become more of what the sky, the sky lounge or whatever it's called is. And, you know, I don't know, I think a lot of times we put a lot of emphasis on roof decks and, and at the expense of courtyards. And, I mean, all these people's houses are facing the courtyard, or a lot of them are facing the courtyards. They're going to see the courtyard all the time. They're rarely going to see the roof deck. And so, and the street doesn't see the roof deck. The street sees the courtyard. The street sees the adult lounge. So like really putting the, putting the emphasis on charging those spaces and making those, you know, those the spaces that people are going to use seems more important to me. And then just making sure the chessboard has pieces so it's not just a checkerboard painted on the ground. And, and, yeah, I guess, I mean, the one thing that we mentioned last time that I didn't really see any changes to, and I know it's probably difficult to make it work, but that lobby on the first floor is still, you know, the elevator and stairs are still offset, you know, pretty far back from the main lobby, making me think that most people probably won't enter through the lobby, or at least a lot of people would end up just walking down the street, the side street instead and going in that side door. So that corner lobby, I sort of, I start to wonder kind of what it is. You know, are there, are the mailboxes in there? I don't know what, you know, it'd be nice to, if you can't make it work with the elevator and the stair coming down at that corner, at least making it work where there's something in that lobby that draws people into that space.
Well, I agree with your comments about the courtyard, enhancing the facades around the courtyard so that there's a little bit more accent and a little bit more visual interest and warmth to it would be great. My, making the adult lounge in the front more usable as a place that people would actually want to go is also important. And one of my, one of my issues is always with the infiltration planters. If there's some way to sink them or do something so that they're not these concrete things that are four feet high that really just take up space, don't add an amenity. They're too high to be seat walls and sit on. They're too high to really interact with. And they just impinge on the space in the courtyard. So if there's a way to reduce the height of those, that would be great. And again, I just want you to really pay attention to that rear facade of shielding the, you know, the interaction between the existing residents back there and the parking garage, whether really careful treatment of the screens and of the lighting so that that doesn't become a problem, the lighting and the noise, because noise from a garage is also an unpleasant thing to have. That house is two stories with windows all along the side and their setback from the property line is pretty small. You might want to think of something other than those trees that are planted along there. Maybe some clumping bamboo would work better just in that narrow space to give some more of a screening effect and something that softens that side of the building because it's a pretty hard exterior on that side. Otherwise, I think that it's quite an attractive building. I think the spaces are thoughtfully put together. And I think that the parking, you know, the, going down to 25% of required parking just seems excessive when you're dealing with families that need to get kids around and things like that. So I'm perfectly fine with 108 parking spaces.
Well, I think that they've met most of the conditions that we asked for. We've studied this many times. I do agree that it would be nice if the interior, I mean, the exterior finish in the interior courtyard was a little richer and also the finish on the outside. And other than that, I think it's very good. I think the entry lobby is primarily for outside visitors and that the side lobby would be used by people who live there because the post office box, I mean, the post, mailboxes are right next to that side lobby. Also, that side lobby is next to the garage. And I think that's where most people will be coming from. Other than that, I think it's a great project and sort of thing we need here in Emeryville.
Well, I echo the other commissioners' comments and agree with them, especially the courtyard. It was also looking a little severe to me. And the planters, I'm not sure why they're always four foot. Do you? Is it to get the volume of water?
Yeah.
It's a bummer. If there's a seat wall, it could be made or something that, because, yeah, just not at human scale. And the, some of the materials and the level of detail on the inner courtyard doesn't quite feel friendly. And I also agree about the leasing office. In general, I love this project. I'm really, really excited about it. And I think you've done a wonderful job. So, thank you. And maybe some motorcycle parking. Oh, and also, I thought, I thought the one resident architect did have a point. I assume you're using a dark colored vinyl window. Is that, that would be, if it would need to be a requirement, you know, like a condition of approval, I would want to have that happen.
Well, I think you guys have done a fantastic job. I still love this project. I think you're really doing a great job answering a lot of needs in a very small space. I'm just absolutely impressed that you can do nine floor plans in a space like this. And to me, we're looking at 30 units that are three bedroom or above. That's more than, that's 34% of this project. That's more than a third. I think that's family friendly and I think it's affordable. And with that, I think if you're looking at families in this home, parents are going to need to take their children places. They can't always use buses, although that's what we prefer. So to me, the parking, because of the amount of large family friendly units that we're putting in this development, I think the parking is justified. And I definitely support the 108 units. support the 108 units. I'm just concerned about the unbundling and what that might cause is the street problems. So I think we need to just stay cognizant of that. I guess I see the adult lounge in the courtyard a little different than, than the rest of my commissioners. As a person without children, I see this maybe as a place to go to get away. I see this as, it does activate the street. It does make it look very festive. To me, this could be where two parents could come and sit while their children are playing in the, in the court, in the main family area courtyard and yet they can sit and have a little bit of quiet and have a conversation of their own, maybe go have a glass of wine or something. And I like the sky deck where it is. I think that's the place, because as a person who lives in a multi-unit building, when people have parties and things like that where they're barbecuing, I don't know that I want that right under my window if I'm the person that's living there. So having it up on the upper deck where it's away from other people and all these parties and things are happening, I think it's a, it's kind of, and it makes the party a little bit more private as well. So I think they've really looked at everything. And, you know, for someone who's not going to live in this product, I think it's something that's very attractive. So with that, I think it's just a really good project. And I think what the neighbors desires for more parking and their concern for losing street parking, I think the 108 is perfectly fine.
I also think this is a fantastic project. And, yeah, it just, it looks really good. And I want to, I want to thank the applicant. I know that we've, we've requested already a couple of big-ticket items that you've included such as the venting the restaurant space all the way up and including the, you know, 10 years worth of transit passes. And, you know, I, I know, I really appreciate you providing that. I know in projects such as this that that is something, you know, as an affordable, as a nonprofit affordable housing developer, that that is something that can really impact your project financing. So I really appreciate that you have included those things. I want to also, I want to kind of echo past comments regarding, one regarding the fiber panel. I would really like to see some color variation in that, if there's any way to do that. I think that that's, that's really kind of a key material on the, the front elevation especially. And that it's, it's one that I, that I definitely wouldn't want to see value engineered in such a way that it, that it affected the, that elevation. So that is one thing I would like to see. And then also, I'm also supportive of the, doing something to kind of improve the courtyard elevations a little bit. So maybe we can kind of think about how we might fashion some conditions of approval to address those, those concerns. I think that's most of my comments. I do have one question of staff that I forgot to ask before. I'm really dying to know, actually, on, on projects like this that are, that straddle the border of the two cities, how, how do we determine which units are in each city for the purposes of tax collection and voting and such? I mean, I, I see even on these, even on these floor plans, there's, you know, there's a unit where the, the city limits kind of run right through the front door. So I was kind of curious.
Well, I don't know, is the honest answer. But clearly, if a unit is 100% in one city or the other, then that's the city it's in. The, I think the general rule is that whatever city the majority of the unit is in is the city it's considered to be in.
Wouldn't the street address of the building?
Well...
And that too?
No, not necessarily. For example, for the prod, for the units that are all or mostly in Oakland, we are, we are collecting the Oakland Unified School District school fee and sending that on to the City of Oakland. And for the units that are all or mostly in Emeryville, we're collecting the Emory Unified School District fee. And that's the school district that those units are considered to be in. We do have a memorandum of understanding with Oakland on this project that has been approved by their city council and our city manager. And that stipulates things like fire and police services, that Emeryville will provide fire and police services to the entire building. So you don't have to worry when you dial 911, you know, which department is, which city's going to show up. But as far as voting and school, I believe it's whatever you, city all or most of the unit is physically in.
Thanks. So with that, does, would anyone like to make a motion? Does anyone have thoughts on conditions of approval or?
I had thoughts on that, improving the courtyard elevation. I think that this applicant has shown responsiveness to our request. And I'm not sure, but maybe staff is understanding what we're requesting in terms of a little bit more, what's the word, sort of that?
Warmth.
Warmth and friendliness at the level of detail in terms of the...
The finish, sort of the...
Yeah. And, and also the filtration planters, making them a little bit more pedestrian scale or, you know, human scale. And I'm wondering if, if staff feels comfortable in working with the applicant to make those changes so we can move this forward. I just don't know.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you're, you're talking, if I understand correctly, you're talking about the interior elevations?
Yes.
Facing the courtyard?
Yeah.
Yes.
That look kind of industrial park-like, yes.
So you're looking for different colors and materials?
Greater warmth.
Upgrade overall.
Colors and materials of greater warmth on the interior elevations facing the courtyards. Okay.
Now, can, can we change the filtration planters? I was understanding then that that was a code requirement, is that? So, I mean...
Does the applicant want to respond to that?
Are they on the deck? Is that it?
We'll work with the civil engineer and the landscape architect on that. My understanding from them is that the civil space, civil has to meet C3 requirements, which requires a certain height for the water, the stormwater to go through before it enters a drain. So we'll see what they can do. But my first thought was that we can, on the side of the, the planter, we would step it out for a seat.
Right.
Just to kind of add a little bit of a, kind of a depth to it. So it's not like a vertical, flat face.
Just as long as that doesn't impede any kind of walkway or anything, because that would be in addition to what we're showing already, right?
It would eat into the courtyard slightly.
Yeah.
But I think it's on the periphery, so it should be okay. And we can kind of, you know, space some stretches of...
Doesn't have to be all the way.
Yeah, some flat spaces and maybe some, some planters that are not stormwater planters. There are just regular planters in between. So that kind of adds a little, a step to it, if you will.
That would be good.
So do we feel that we need to add conditions of approval or do we feel that the developers?
Well, I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
I've got a couple noted down here. Did you want to say anything about the cement board on the outside?
The variation in the front facade?
Yeah. I mean, is there a way to make that, make a condition of approval that the fiber cement lap siding have a variation in color similar to that of natural wood?
I think you just said it.
That's almost exactly what I was going to say.
Sounds good.
And also that the vinyl windows be reviewed by staff.
And with those conditions, I would motion, make a motion that we approve the project.
With the variations?
With all those conditions that we just stated.
I'll, I'll read.
I'll second.
Is it, I mean, even if we don't put a fire pit or, I mean, even if, I mean, is there a way to bring a little bit more? I just worry about that, that front entry, that, that sliver, that adult lounge, if it's all staring at some sculpture and there's just some people around it. I hear what you're saying, Stephen, but I still think it, it's not living up to its potential. It looks like such an exciting space from the outside. I'd actually love to see a condition of approval that there, there be light strung over it, like in the rendering. But, but a fire pit or something out there that will actually make it a space that people, I mean, you'd be surprised at what a fire, like people will gather around a fire pit.
And some twinkly lights.
Yeah.
So would you guys have a, a problem with putting in a fire pit rather than the artwork?
I actually don't think we have a fire pit anywhere in the development.
There's someone called out on a deck.
Is it barbecue or?
Yeah.
I think it's in the zen garden.
Oh yeah, the fire.
It's a zen fire pit.
Yeah, it's in the, that's right.
Maybe we could move it then.
Fire feature.
A fire feature?
Yes.
Maybe we could...
You weren't aware of that and the liability that it involves?
There's a fire feature in the zen garden. So would you oppose to them moving that to the front adult lounge instead?
I wouldn't oppose to it. But, I mean, I was, I was personally opposed to having a fire feature for environmental reasons. But I think, you know, as an activation, as a space activator, we'll, I mean, I'm open to having a conversation with our landscape architects to try and activate that space. We may come up with an equivalent to a fire pit, if that's okay. But something, something other than a sculpture.
Yeah. So, I mean, something that is a proven means of bringing people together to a space. And maybe, again, a condition of approval that, that, that the focal element for the adult lounge be reviewed with staff.
I would support that as well, yeah. Add as a condition of approval.
Can you please repeat that?
I got it.
That the focal element at the adult lounge be reviewed with staff, with the, with the intention being that it be a, I don't know, a place, something that, that brings people to that area.
A draw to the space.
A draw to the space.
And I would add that to my motion.
Well, if, if we're adding these things, I would like to also say, ensure that there's adequate screening on the rear of the, rear of the building adjacent to the existing residence that faces, that the sides onto the building.
Say that again?
That staff ensure that there's adequate screening between the parking garage and the adjacent residence that has windows looking in that direction.
Okay. The residence on the east side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and for clarification, you're talking about the overlook, not the lounge, which is in the back, correct? The adult?
They call it adult lounge on the landscape drawings. It's the, the one that's on...
San Pablo.
On San Pablo.
So my motion would include all of those conditions?
Okay. Would you like me to restate what I've got?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, I've got, and this is pretty much all thing, design revisions to be reviewed and approved by the director, right? That the vinyl windows should be a dark color. That the colors and materials on the interior elevations of the courtyard be of greater warmth. That, let's see, that the fiberboard lap siding have variations in color similar to wood. Is that right? Variations in color similar to wood. That the filtration planters in the courtyard be made lower if feasible and/or seats added to their edges and/or new planters be added that are not C3 that can be lower. That a focal element be added to the adult lounge and be reviewed by staff. And with the idea being that it's something that draws people to the space and that there be adequate screening between the parking garage and the adjacent residents where there are windows.
And there's additional motorcycle moped parking.
I didn't hear that one.
I just added it.
It was heard.
It's on my list.
Additional, how much?
Twice as much. There's not, there's none now or is there two or four?
There's two, I believe.
There's two. How about eight? Is that too many? That seems...
Well, you might have to lose a parking place to do that.
There's four per parking place, correct?
I don't know.
Well, I don't know how the applicant feels about this, but in terms of our code, you can substitute four motorcycle spaces for one car space. So it counts towards your requirement.
So then we'd have six. Six would be, take one space?
Okay.
I would add that to my motion.
I have a clarifying question. On the vinyl windows, I want to ask if the color can be on the visible sides of the building. And then in the interior courtyard, can I still use white vinyl where it's not visible?
I, I, I thought you were going to ask that question.
I have, I have to protect my budget.
Yeah, yeah, no, no. Personally, I'm, I'm okay with that as long as it's kind of consistent with, I mean, we, we were asking for changes to the elevations. I think as long as it's consistent with the colors and materials that you're still going to have in the revised elevations.
And that the profile is, and that the profile is contemporary, as, as Commissioner Gunkel was stating.
I don't know. I mean, it's like the courtyard's already needs, needs some work. And then introduce that in where all of a sudden you're using the white vinyl windows that everyone just sort of inherently associates with kind of cutting corners or being... I don't, I don't know.
We're also looking at a nonprofit affordable housing and trying to make this happen.
I mean, I guess maybe the key then is really making it work with whatever you're bringing into the courtyard. So, so if you're bringing new, some, you know, whatever you're trying, material-wise and approach-wise, you're utilizing to, to bring some warmth to the courtyard, that somehow you're doing, you're, you're doing that with the windows as well.
Okay.
Is it really that much of a cost difference for the?
It's a, last time I looked, I think it was a 15% add.
And that's anything other than white?
Yeah.
So, why don't we say something to the effect of the, the interior, the courtyard-facing windows shall be vinyl consistent with the aesthetic of the courtyard elevations? Is that acceptable?
And maybe white, I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Provided it's consistent.
Yes, yes, got that.
And we'll of course wrap it around the break of the year, you know, where, where it's breaking.
Okay.
I second.
Oh, that's right. Did we have a second? Yeah, you just seconded it?
Well, she, I said...
On my original, Sean seconded, but I've amended it. With each of these amendments, I have made the motion. So whether Sean wants to second it or...
Whatever, yeah. I don't, whatever we need to do.
If, if the amendments are agreeable to the seconder, then the seconder doesn't change, I think, is how it works.
Myself and Sean.
Okay. All right, I think we've got it. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Chair Moss?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
This one is the Shell mound site.
Did we lose the projector again?
Yes.
I'm picking out this one. I've had my medicine for today.
So I'm just going to briefly introduce the parcel A. I'm not going to show any slides since it's not on here. We did have a study session in October of last year and there were several concerns that were made. One, primarily the location of the pedestrian bridge connection. I think staff and the commission was pretty unanimous in wanting to see the pedestrian connection where it used to be in the approved PUD, which is through the building, through the Shell mound building. So that they have changed and they have relocated where it was supposed to be. That is the one big change. There was a change in the unit mix as well. The unit mix, the total number has been reduced by about, from 218 to 185. And they have increased the number of three-bedroom units from, it was used to be four-person, now it is the same. And they've, I think they have increased, they've increased their studios. There were several comments that were made at the community meeting. Traffic was identified as a big concern and the need to find a good way of finding signage was suggested. And terraces resident expressed concern regarding the view blockage. So to address that, they have dropped the height of the northern portion of the building to 50 feet as was in the approved PUD. And they have also met with the terraces condo complex earlier this, earlier this month. And a letter from Cindy Trulow was attached to your, an email from Cindy Trulow was attached to your staff report. to your, an email from Cindy Trulow was attached to your staff report. I believe she is present here today as well and she may be speaking. So in terms of what we are looking for from you is again, basically your ideas on design and the unit mix. In terms of staff, we do have an issue with the building design and massing and also the choice of color, color and materials palette. We also feel that a good wayfinding signage is needed on both ends of the bridge walk. We also, there was a lot of discussion on the public market sign that is proposed on the railroad elevation, but there was no agreement on whether the sign was appropriate for the site, so we would be looking forward to your ideas on that. And we felt that the roof treatment needed to be refined and be non-reflective and I think the applicant has been working on that as well along with the terraces residents. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to the applicant to walk you through their design.
Good evening. Nathan Hong, I'm Senior Vice President with Avalon Bay and we're happy to be here again with you tonight to show you our progress on both parcels A and D. And as Maru kind of highlighted, you know, on parcel A, we've, we've made a, you know, we heard you loud and clear and we made a conscious decision to come back and take a look at the pedestrian walkway connection to the bridge and, and that's one of the reasons that the unit count's reduced, you know, that in addition to reducing the height of the, of the building on the south side. We, as Maru has also highlighted, we, we have with the architect met with the terraces and not only to, to kind of, you know, pay a little bit closer attention to what their views were and their vantage point, but also to kind of look at it from that, from the, so-called eastern elevation of the, from the railroad end. Similarly, on parcel D, we've gone back and taken a look at that and a much harder look at how the townhomes and works with the rest of the master development and 63rd Street and Shellmount, taking a look at the building massing a lot more. And overall, in general, I think we're also highlighted early on that we've also met with of course staff, but also with the city's design architect a few times to, to go through both the, the massing, the design aesthetics and, and even as far as family friendly and looking at our units and explaining to both the, the design architect and, and looking at it deeply ourselves to make sure we're addressing some of those components, but also getting input that we've incorporated. So overall, we're, we're, you know, excited about where we are and, and love to show you the progress and I'll turn it over to both our architect and our landscape architect to show you some of those details and look forward to your comments.
Good evening. My name is Tom Cox and I'm with TCA Architects. We're the architects for both parcel A and parcel D. I think, excuse me, granddaughter cold. I think most people come here in front of the design review group and the commission and thank you once you're finally let them go do their project, but for me personally, I'd like to thank you for our last study session because it was very direct, very cryptic, very pointed and very well thought out. As a result of that, it really caused the team to dig back into the project and, and look at what we had done. We thought we had a good building. I mean, we really came to you with, you know, honesty and integrity and we thought we had done a good job, but we missed some stuff. And so it, it becomes a team framework, I think, between city and architect and developer and builder and master planner to get that input and to go back and rethink what we thought was good and make it better. So what we're here to do tonight is we don't think we're done and so we're looking for input. What we want to do is present to you what we heard and then present to you what we thought we did to make it better. So initially, I think the biggest thing that came up, especially on parcel A, we'll deal with A only, was the bridge connection. And what we had done initially was take the bridge behind the building and put it into a public plaza and it became extremely clear to us very, very quickly that that was not what the, what you were looking for. So we went back and dug in. There was two things that affected the building dramatically. One is the 50-foot height limitation on the south side and the actually 140-foot height limitation on the north side, which really set up a dynamic on these two buildings that was very much different than what we had before, which was an 85-foot building all the way across the street. That was the approved footprint and the approved height limitation that was in the PUC. So that made us really look at a completely different approach to the building and driving the walkway from the bridge through, between the two buildings and making a direct connection to the street, bringing people across and down, became our paramount concern. And how did, how could we do that? We needed to make our spaces safe, we needed to make the walkway safe, we needed to make it a, a nice place to be because this becomes part of the public realm. So we worked hard on that. We reduced the size of the building on the right. It became a much smaller building. We're now capped off at 50 feet on the south. You were concerned about the value of the corner plaza on the, on the north side of the building. We still have a plaza, but it's much reduced and that leasing center that we had that was sort of an iconic little building tucked around the corner, that building is no longer there and we've moved the leasing in the lobby to our building into the center and it gives a nice break between those two buildings. We've also tried to reflect more of the rhythm of the retail with the building and the building materials and the, and how we bring the building to the ground. And we've updated the, the colors and the materials and we have all the percentages of those materials and how they're applied to the building as part of the package. We're using a combination of stucco, we're using cementitious panels, we're using metal, we're using rainscreen and we're using that judiciously throughout the entire building. Some of the things that we also did is, is that we created different programs for our courtyards. We do know that the family friendly, and we've heard it tonight, both from the public and from you, that family friendly is very important. And as Nathan said, we took that into consideration and we've made some, we hope, large moves towards that and we're, we'd like to talk to you about those tonight also. So the big, the big idea, how do I do the full screen here? View?
Yeah, full screen, down there.
Down, down.
Down, down. There you go. Right there.
Full screen. There we go, thank you. So again, we're dealing with parcel A. It's a triangular site that's on the right and we've been through the master plan, the street scene and all of that tonight. We can probably move past that. The building to the south is now 50 feet and it is a reflection of the street and the streetscape and the scale of pedestrianization is a much lower building. What we tried hard to do is to create a gateway. The gateway is earmarked by the tower that you see on the corner and it tells people and helps identify where that break in the building is and how that pathway will work to get up to the bridge, through the pedestrian walkway and over to the Amtrak station. So the gateway is a key component of what we're trying to, to create. We have the smaller building on the right and then we have a larger building on the left. We did have a chance to meet with the city architect numerous times, talked about floor plans, materials, building, rhythm, color. We also had a chance to meet with the terraces folks and we had a good interaction with them and a good dialogue and some of their concerns are things that we're currently working on, but I think we heard what they had to say and I'll try and illuminate some of those as we go through the rest of the project. We also wanted to make sure that we created distinct edges around the project. Each building always has four sides and then, and there's never really a back. So we try and do the right thing for all sides of the building and bring architecture as best we can to the building. So this is the street scene for the building and we really, we had and we did again, walked through Emeryville and we looked to see what some of the messages were from the buildings that are in the city. It's definitely a manufacturing, formerly industrial, there's a strong office presence in the city and we tried to emulate some of those thoughts. And then we have a very strong image and a very strong presence across the street, also with the public market. This diagram shows the retail and the pedestrian access to our leasing lobby and also to the stair that goes up and over the top to the bridge. It shows our bicycle path. It shows the retail on right and left on, on our lobby, which is the blue area. A couple of things, one of the things that was brought up is that we only had one point of access and it was on the north side and we have introduced a second point of access, probably a primary point of access on the south. So now the garage has a complete penetrability and access from two sides. So we think that helps a lot with traffic issues. We're about 13,500 square feet of retail. As you can see, we've pulled the building back on the north and south and tried to create an opportunity for some indoor/outdoor spaces. We pulled our leasing center and our lobby for our building and pulled that adjacent to the stair and we're wrapping that with glass and we're really looking forward to having a, a visible, transparent experience as you go up and down the stairs. April Phillips is here today or tonight or tomorrow morning, however long this goes, and she's going to be talking about the landscape. The building is wrapped around the outside, so parking garage is really never visible on this building and you can see just that beginning hint on the right slide there of how the different courtyards interact with the pedestrian passo or the walkway that goes to the bridge. On our second level on the left, we have some of our recreation. We have our fitness center, our chill lounge. We have a plaza that's outside the units that goes up to another level. So there's multiple levels on the project and I think it makes for an interactive and kind of a fun space to deal with. The building on the right also is now only two stories above the podium, getting us up to the 50 feet. So that lowers the profile and allows a lot more light and air into the building. So when you get a chance to reboot the screen, feel free.
It's not going to work yet.
Hey, I'm going to try and look at this from here.
I know, it's not going to work yet. Light hasn't been.
Not yet. So this is a, a description of some of the materials and we've taken the elements of the building and we've kind of blown them up, so they're a little clearer to see. It's hard to do this with, you know, computer drawings and renderings, but the materials that we're envisioning are rains, horizontal rainscreens, cementitious panels. At the ground level, we're utilizing brick, board form concrete. At the retail, we're using storefront windows. Our windows are vinyl, thin profile and dark. Just getting that on record real quick. And, and we also are using plaster, but we're using plaster in, in several colors. This would be a view looking as you're coming up Shellmount, heading north, the corner of our building with the lower level retail, the upper level, you can see the cementitious panels turning. And so we didn't just cut the, the materials off at the corner, we tried to turn the corner and then create some kind of a continuity with the building. As we go down the southern side of the building, this is adjacent to the parking lot, you can see on the left-hand side, we're continuing the cementitious panels. Right at the end of that is where we have our delivery, trash and all of our kind of loading and unloading. And then further to the right is where we have our entrance into the garage for pedestrians and guests. We are using cement plaster along that south side and working with the city architect, we used a more contemporary rhythming of that building as we moved towards the side where the railroad is. The top slide is turning that corner. This is the building that faces the railroad and also faces the terraces. Some of the concerns that have come up from the residents were a solid wall because we now are creating a barrier on both sides and sound reverberating back and forth was a concern. We've engaged a sound consultant for, to try and come up with a system of baffles on that wall or panels that will help dampen that sound and so it doesn't cause a, a problem for the residences. Also, the residences were concerned that looking down on the roof of the short building, they can't see the tall building, but looking down on the roof of the short building, that they're going to just see mechanical equipment. So we've engaged our landscape architect to work with us at this point to, after we've laid out the California Title 24 requirements for our HVAC units, our condensers, our screening devices, to come up with some kind of a green screening device that will be on the roof and help block that view directly onto the. So we tried to create an articulation of the south. This is actually the penetration that you can see between the two buildings, the large tall building on the right and the, and the low building. And it's that penetration that goes between the buildings and we'll show you a blow-up of how that walkway works and how it interacts with the courtyards for both sides. This is the northern side and where we have our second entry, turning the corner, that's the side that will face ultimately the garage that will be built as part of the master plan. This is a quick snapshot of the bridge connection and in a second, April's going to come up and walk us through that in a second. Okay. And then there's a shot that looks down and across that bridge connection. The goal here was to create something that was interesting. Currently, the, the tower that we have has that stair that wraps around it, it's got a lot of blind spots, it doesn't smell very good on any given day, it's, it's a little bit creepy and it doesn't have that sense of security. We wanted to bring all of that into the walkway. So we need good lighting, we need good planting, we need an opportunity for people to sit down. We want it to be an experience of moving from the bridge to the sidewalk and, and encourage people to actually utilize that space. So there's a section through the building, I think April's going to show you much better views of that. Another concern of the residents at the terrace was the height of our building. So initially, we had an 85-foot building all the way across. The PUC, the master, the master plan said that that's not what was envisioned. So this slide shows, looking down from the terraces, they were generous enough or, or nice enough to let us go up into their units and look down and take some photography. We dropped those photographs into what is the approved master plan, which is on the lower right and on, into our project, which is the lower left. If you look straight across from the tracks, you can see the profile of the building, 50 feet to the roof of our building on the left and then what is allowed 140 feet or 45 and our building is now at 85. So that's the, kind of a comparative analysis of, of what the views are and what was approved. Materials is a big issue and always a concern. And I know last time we were here, there was a concern that we had too much stucco. So we went back and actually did a complete takeoff and, and allocated our materials and the location of those materials around the building and we've given you a percentage breakdown of how those materials occur. So I think, again, it's a little hard for me to see even, but I think our stucco exposure is about 30% and everything, every other 70% is something else. And that's an example of the materials that we're anticipating using. Floor plans, we're now 185 units and there's a, a mix. These units are anticipated to be kind of cool, hip and contemporary. We have one bicycle parking spot for every single unit on the property and AVB, as an owner, allows bicycles to be brought up and hung in the units and they even provide in a number of units, something called a gear wall, which gives you the opportunity to bring your bike up if you actually own a decent bike. Three-bedroom features, there's a lot of talk about family friendly and typically a project like this, we wouldn't see much of the two-bedroom, three-bedroom, but this became a very, a big focal point for us with the community, with, with you and, and with ownership. And so what we've tried to do is create opportunities that enhance and encourage families to live here. So our three-bedroom units consist of a, a series of things that we went through and, and tried to create opportunities for families. Larger storage, we heard things like, where do I put the stroller? Where do I, you know, things that are larger and, and more cumbersome, so we created larger storage. Where does my child study? We created alcoves for studying. How do we eat together? How do we eat together as a family if we only have a bar? We created separate dining rooms. Along with the two bedrooms, double washer and dryer, we think these are some of the key components of creating successful, family-friendly units. On the outside spaces, we also created areas where we have chalkboard walls, we have areas for people to sit, we have a movie wall that we've incorporated into our plaza, the lower terrace, and we've also designated the upper terrace as family-friendly opportunity. So with that, because I've talked way too long, April's going to help me out, and we'll be here together and hopefully get some interaction and dialogue going and take good notes.
Okay. Hi, I'm April Phillips with April Phillips Design Works. And this has been a fun project to take to this next level before you today. I have my little handout in case I can't see over there if it goes out again. But our goal here is to create an environment that's indoor and outdoor. You know, there's a blend that we really can celebrate the fact that we're in California. And the trick here is really to concentrate on the landscape, making it fun, make it accessible, make it modern, make it contemporary, and really do some, really, what we hope is you're going to see is some cool things. It is.
Down button.
Down button. There. Nope. Uh-oh. What did I do? Shoot. Help me. Oh, there. Over there.
Just that down.
Just that one. Okay. So as Tom said, we actually have a lot of zones because of the grade change. One of the key things in dealing with the grand stair, the linear park, if you will, is that we have to get up 32 feet, okay? And we want to make it fun. And that becomes sort of this whole, the whole blue area is our park district, the public realm that goes through the space. On the left-hand side, on the north, is what we're calling the sun deck terrace, because that is at a different elevation. And on the right-hand side, we actually have two elevations. So the brown represents the upper level that you get off of, from the linear park zone, and then the chill-out zone is below. So there's all these different grade chains, grade changes happening, which makes it a very fun place to go through and experience. Go back. All right. And this is it altogether. So one of the things we wanted to do was actually also make it dynamic. How do you get through these spaces and really push people through? So the way we decided to do it on this project is this use of lines and angles. And we thought that would help to guide people in a fun way without being pushy about it. And so one of the big things that we did is, at the bottom, is to really understand, how can we make 30 feet of grade change on stairs fun? So we see it as a cross between the Spanish Steps and the High Line. And we want to create places and eddies along those stairs that not only do you, for the people who are commuting and want to go up and down fast, they can either go straight up the stairs in one manner, but also benches and seats, so people could come out here and have their lunch, have a cup of coffee, whether you're shopping, take a break. So the stairs become a lingering place, not just a pass-through space. And we think that's going to make it a very unique place within Emeryville to, everybody's going to want to come. And they're right across from the public market, so, you know, there's this really great synergy. We also brought the pedestrian bridge elevator up towards this plaza. So if you don't want to go up the stairs, you go right up the elevator. And I'm not going to point, but you can see a little square. I'm afraid to touch anything here. And I've shown some of the grades, so you can begin to see. What we tried to do was go up the stairs in a way where the landings were comfortable for people, and then you could go up again and again. So that's the main thing about the stairs. We also want to do a fun thing with lighting. So you can see in the upper right, all of these images on the right-hand side are inspiration. So possibly using LED lights and some kind of lighting effects, so that at night, you can come up the building and up the stairs, and you see some fun ways of lighting it. We're looking at the walls against the building to incorporate history into some of the features. And then how we mass the landscape and how we do the patterning of the ground plane, so possibly some linear banding kind of patterns. We're going to look at all these things. One of the key things I want to say here right now is that we're also looking at how do we create sort of a fun artistic event. And we're calling it the overhead gateways, and those are those red bars, and how it kind of connects and works with the building, we're not sure yet. But the idea was that you continue to have these canopy, thin lines of light, if you will, that would get you to the bridge. And so it keeps you going, keeps you moving, it draws you through. And the image in the middle is sort of that idea of something that is very simply lit. It wouldn't be that many, but there may be four of them through the path to get you through. Again, the idea of sitting on the stairs, as well as stairs happening against you. And then because we have this grade change, we actually have the opportunity, in that linear park, to actually not always just have raised planters. I know you guys talked about the four-foot planters. This is one area where we can actually go underground more. We have a little more headroom. And that's usually the issue of why you have four-foot planters, is because there's really not, between the structural slab and above, you know, you have to go up, not down. So we think this is a great opportunity. So this is the view looking towards the elevator wall. And you see the stairs really come out into the public realm, so that you really feel removed from the building and are on this stairs that is its own thing. And there's the opportunity for the wall right at the elevator, and then you come up. And as you can see, we begin to have the landscape. And you can really sense the distance, because there's the bridge over the Amtrak lines, I mean, the train lines, and then how you get down. So it's quite, quite a long walk, but it's going to be fun and beautiful. And this is the other direction. So these are some, again, some concept imagery, inspiration imagery, of how we might integrate some of that idea of history or fun into the wall and really kind of capture sort of the hip quality of this area. And so that's looking at the lower building. You can really feel the difference in the scale on each side of the space. And the nice thing is the stair that we're, is mostly near the lower building, so it's really not overscaled and overpowered by the building height. So I think this is really kind of cool, and it lets in more light. And then these are examples of how we see the different terraces. And one of the things I want to point out is, the really interesting thing, having this public realm through our space, is how do we interface it and also create perosity between it? We don't want to shut our courtyards out of the space. We want to kind of integrate it, but we also want to feel like it is a different space. So if you can come out of the courtyard and down in the space, if you were going to go out to the public market, or if you're coming to visit somebody and you know that's the gate, they can meet you at the gate and come in. And there you go. So where was I? I have my space here, because I can't see that far. And I guess I can put my. So the one on the left is what we're calling the center terrace. And we really see, again, using forms and spaces to create more fun. We have this idea of creating these folding benches and folding walls. I personally don't like to just see planter walls when I go to a podium. I want to see benches hanging on walls. I want my walls to become another feature. So what we're doing in this one is really kind of creating fire pits with sort of angled walls that create a sort of real cool nook, high-bar tables that allow you to kind of glimpse and see other people. We have, we're thinking of using pebble seating in the sun terrace. And then there's a whole area to put sort of more lounging type of chairs, so that people can relax. And this is where we see a lot of sun coming in, because it's the opening from the smaller building down to the space. On the right-hand side, as you go through, once you come in, you can actually go into the building either way, or you can go down the stairs. And at the stairs, we also took the same idea that we've done at the grand staircase, coming up from the plaza on this urban realm, and created sort of an amphitheater effect. So some of the seats, the stairs, become benches again. And this is the area where we have a movie wall, because our grade is about 15-foot difference roughly from one terrace to the other. So the back wall, we can do the movies. And this is the, the lower terrace is the one with our chill lounge. So the idea is that this is the social nest hub, and you can come out with your computers, you're going to come up there for nights for movies. Again, another fire pit, really cool seating. And one of the things we're really trying to do is every patio on each of these podiums where we're coming out, so people have access also on those levels to come in and out of these spaces. And the various materials, of course, would be sympathetic with the building, but really in concrete, pavers, wood, metal, all of those different things. And so on. I'm still not on. And this is one of the sections through the terraces. And you can begin to see how the forms, how fun it is. I mean, again, with the family-friendly idea, actually, every space is family-friendly. The most fun for the kids might be any of them, because all of the things are going to be done in such a way that it's discovery, it's unique, it's a little bit different. You can climb it, you can sit in it. It's not just a, it's not like a play structure, if you will. Though on the upper terrace on the right, we do have the chalkboard, we have the ability to have a climbing, climbing object, wall. We have sort of the pebble seating, which could be also climbed on. So we're trying to integrate things so that it just is a great experience and an interesting place to be. On the family activity terrace, too, we do have the bigger barbecue, the more communal tables. In other areas, we have smaller groupings. So we're really thinking uniquely how people can use the space and go through the space. And I think we are very close. The last page we had was just, again, some images. We have one area where you can do yoga outside. We have just how we would group the tables and chairs, the notion of the lounges in the sun area. And then we're really just, again, looking at materials. So this is just sort of the first blush at the kind of way the features that we might use and how it might feel. Kind of fun, again, and being outdoors and celebrating that. And here, you may want to come back up.
So that's pretty much it. I think one of the really fun things about this is the challenge that you gave us that we initially, I think, balked at, which was running that public space through two private areas. And what happened is, as a result of that, we found that the interaction between the private spaces and the public walkway became very dynamic. One of the suggestions we got at the very beginning, from the bridge to the center of the first building, was to create some townhouses along that edge. They gave it kind of a stoop and porch feel as you came off of the bridge and started on your pathway down to the street. And so we did. We incorporated some townhouses along that edge. And after we looked at them, they were really kind of fun, because they're two-story townhouses. They're pretty unobtrusive, and it feels like a little village. We also have gates, so that you can come and go to the bridge from the entire building. So the encouragement for us is to get people to actually get out, cross the bridge, use Amtrak, use the buses, use Emery Go Round. Try and get that connectivity to the street, the connectivity to the transportation, and really try and enforce that. So as a result, we've made, I hope, some really solid headway. And again, we know we're not done. And we're looking for your input, and we welcome it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
A couple. The townhouses that do access that central corridor?
Yes.
You were just mentioning. Do they, I see they've got little porches or patios at that level. Do they have access? Like, can you, they get from their patio to that walk?
Yes.
That public walk?
Yes. That is the intention. We thought that if we didn't do that, that they would be meaningless.
Okay.
So we wanted to have direct access. Some of them, one of the comments that came from the last study session was, I think, gentleman said he wanted to see some kind of a slope, take out some of that, the height with some slopes. So from the bridge, towards where the stairs are, we have a very gentle 2% to 3% slope. So what that does is, it starts dropping the bridge down below the level of the townhouses. So now we have an opportunity to create those little stoops and porches. It was a natural, wonderful thing that happened. And when somebody suggested, we, oh, you can't do that, you got people right on the walkway. And then we did it, and it was great. So that's the thing about interaction. I mean, sometimes you just don't see, you work on something really, really hard, and you get blinded to what the opportunities are. And so this has opened up a great, a different look at how this building operates, these buildings.
The privacy fences that are between the private courtyards and the public way, I mean, is that, is that completely opaque, or is that, I mean, is there visibility through those?
There's visibility through them.
There is.
Yeah. We think, again, that physical eye-to-eye, eyes on that walkway. The important thing for us, too, is that to have that walkway be safe, it has to be well-lit, it has to have people with eyes on that walkway 24/7, as much as we possibly can. So the answer is yes. It is, Trent. It is a permeable space. Yes.
I guess my last one was just the sign. I mean, have you had conversations with the terraces?
You mean that big sign that we put up?
Yeah.
Well, our goal here was, and it was a little controversial, people going, don't show the sign. But we wanted to show you the sign.
You're going to surprise us.
Wanted to show you the sign, because we wanted that question. We want to announce the public marketplace. We want people coming across that bridge to know where they're going, and to make it, again, to make it fun. So these are just devices that we're trying to find that make this a unique experience. So yes, we haven't talked to anybody, I don't think, I think you've seen the sign, but then they said, don't show the sign. But we think the sign could be really fun.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public comment on this item. So if anyone would like to speak on Public Marketplace, Shellmount site, I think also known as Site A, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Cindy Truelove, and the good news is I don't have the measles, but I have something, so I apologize for my voice. We just really want to, first of all, thank the commission, Planning Commission, for all that you've done already, and to help move this kind of in a direction that makes it much more exciting for those of us who live at the terraces and want to move forward with great infill, but still have our views left and still have a really exciting community. So we noted that with what we saw when they came to us already. And thanks to the proponents who were willing to come twice, once to come shoot from several of our terraces, to then be able to create a real sense of what this would look like. And then again, to come on as guests of our board to present to our community. We had 10 or 15 people and had lots of interest, and I just mostly am here to say thank you. But I do want to just share that there were a couple of concerns, and I think Tom certainly covered one of them, which is the sound canoning problem, that we think could be a problem. And so we're very grateful for their efforts to create some baffling, something that will affect that, to the degree that's possible. Secondly, there's also a big concern with a big white roof that we'll all be looking down on. When TMG worked with us around this project, they proposed some sort of green roof, and we know, you know, we're not going to have the California Academy of Sciences out our window, but something that will be appealing and not just reflect heat back to us. So we look forward to continuing to collaborate with the proponents and with you all to make that possible. And I will say, no, there was no discussion of the sign. No, I mean, we know, we live in an urban environment, and I'm sure if we can come up with something that's aesthetically pleasing and that won't block views and would invite people into our neighborhood, that would be a good thing. But thank you again for coming to visit and for hearing us.
Anyone else like to speak?
So my wife, who's also an architect, attended one of the community meetings, and where there were many problems with the previous scheme. And I told her that when, it's always nice for architects to hear good things when they do make positive changes. So I, both of us feel that this is a tremendously improved scheme, that it's really a very good response to the criticism that they receive. The through walkway is the natural solution. I've used that bridge many a time. And so I think, I think it's a really good scheme, and the overall building, I think, is quite nice. I think it's a kind of elegant, clean, contemporary modernism that I think of when I think of the Emeryville projects that are going on. One comment that I would make about the walkway through is, I would be, I noticed that there are these planners and sort of pinch points. I'd be a little careful about the clearances as one moves through there. The bridge right now is none too wide. And, you know, I've taken my bike across many, people take bikes across, people walk, et cetera. And so I would be careful about pinching down that walkway to narrow points. The red gates, I was just going to mention that you might look up Fushimi Inari in Japan, that series of red gates that reminds me of, that's a kind of playful reference. And I think it, I think it's a fun idea. I like, I like generally the spirit of landscaping. In terms of the sign, one is it doesn't block views from the terraces because of its location. It's going to be right in line with the taller building. Secondly, is I think it's really critical to have, because I know that I've oftentimes seen people who stop at Amtrak, who are strangers to Emeryville, they're waiting for a train, they don't know what's over there. And now... And now all you'll see is this apartment building that you won't know that there's a public market. You'll just see a bridge going to an apartment building, and that -- and so if you're a stranger, you will not -- you need that sign. Right now, you can see the public market, and you can see the public market sign. So I would strongly encourage that that sign be included because, like I say, otherwise people will not know it's there. And so anyway, I think it's a very strong project, and I'm very happy to see the kinds of adjustments that the developer and the architects have made.
Any other speakers? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we'll go ahead and bring this back for discussion. And we've got about 20 minutes before, a little more than 20 minutes before we need to extend the meeting. So let's see if we can get through this one item before we have to extend. So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Well, as usual, mine are written down, so I'll try to get through them pretty quickly. First of all, this is a much improved project. Thank you very much. A big thank you for relocating the central staircase and lowering this southern building. A couple of things regarding the staircase, and I understand the playfulness and the fun and everything, but please straighten out the path. I understand the desire to make it interesting and inviting, but like the path through Christie Park, we're trying to reprogram the thinking towards walking as a transit option more than just a recreational activity. So walking paths, more than any other path, need to be direct and not zigzagged. Secondly, I need to ask that you add bike troughs on the stairways. Bikers would like the option of taking the stairs as well as the elevators, and Wyrm has agreed to install them on their eastern side of their staircase. It just makes it so much easier to traverse. I actually was coming home from work yesterday, and at 65th Street, I came across a three city train that was going slower than I could bike ride. So I rode to the train station and actually carried my bike up and over the stairs because I don't use those elevators, and actually ran into another biker coming up the other way because we couldn't see each other. So bikes would definitely use this bridge, and we definitely need some bike troughs in there. And actually, when it actually comes to us for approval, I'm going to make that a condition of approval if they're not in the plan, or request that anyway. I really like everything else you've done with the bridge connection. I think you've really, really come a long way. There are a couple of points where I strongly disagree with the city's development coordinating committee. I don't feel we want more articulation and better use of color. These are the methods of the past that we're trying very hard to steer away from. I don't feel the public art component should coordinate with what's being done under the Powell Street Bridge. It's a bit like buying a painting to match your sofa. Each piece of art that we install needs -- should stand on its own merits. One piece of art does not need to match any others. If it did, it would be decoration and not art. The eastern railroad side of the building needs more work. It's really looking like the backside of a building. Just some quick suggestions is maybe increase the size of the windows on there. And I'm speaking more of the more southern building than the more northern building, the one that's all brown and has the little slit windows. You know, so maybe increase those windows, and then maybe you could do something with your public art there. Maybe that could be where your public art goes to really break that up. The public market sign, again, is where I agree with the DCC indirectly. I like the sign. It reminds me of Pike's Place Market in Seattle, which is very iconic. If it's not well-received, maybe you take it off the roof and mount it on the side of the building, right by the staircase there, to where it's still there, still visible, but not up on it. But I kind of like it up on the thing. And like our resident architect had suggested with that new building blocking that, the other consideration is when the transit building gets built, the stairs for that entrance is going to be way over on Horton Street. So when someone's standing on the platform, they're not going to be able to know how to get over there and what's over there. So I think something there is really important. So I think, you know, it is -- it does work, and it is a wayfinding sign, which was requested that we put wayfinding there. In addition, I like the wayfinding signs that you showed, both in Plan Pages L 1.2 and again on L 1.3, the ones that are embedded, that have kind of the brass lettering or the arrows and stuff. I think they're very artful and easy to interpret. As a suggestion, thinking on the side, on your side of the tracks, the signs could direct people to the Amtrak station, Doyle Hollis Park, or San Pablo Avenue. We want to put stuff in there because it's permanent that are not going to go away, so I don't think we'd want to put business names and stuff like that in there. I feel the north section of the building, where the bike shop and pet wash are located, need windows. If they may be transom windows, they may be opaque, but there needs to be some form of natural light coming into those spaces. And fresh air would also be nice if it could be done securely. There are a few areas that I need to see more detail, and those are the illustrations on Page A 2.1, A 6.3, and A 1.2, showing the new location of the crosswalks. There seem to be some conflicting ideas of where the actual crosswalk will go. I believe it's now showing in most of the drawings where most people want it. And I need to know if the bus is still there in front of the central staircase. So when you come back, if you can kind of really tell us exactly where the bus is going to be and where the crosswalks are going to be placed, that would be helpful. And explain the treatment, the finished treatment of the garage levels on the south side that are going to face the high house. I can kind of get an idea, but I really kind of want to know what those are going to look like. So again, so I think the point is really clear from all of us that we don't want things looking like a parking garage. And then give detail the south-facing upper level of the north building. So as you're looking from the bridge through the courtyard into that north facade, the illustrations in the plan doesn't really show me windows and how that is going to look. I'm sure it's going to be great-looking, but it would be helpful to approve a project where we could see it. And then something, your plans here, you showed tonight on the presentation, gave us the idea, but I'd like to see the plans, how those different levels of the courtyards look. I think that's an amazing idea. It looks really, really exciting. I like the activities and everything you guys have put in there. So that's my comments. I think it's a good job. Thank you.
Well, I also am very, very happy to see the grand staircase back, so thank you very much. And it's great. I definitely disagree with the bigger scale on the railroad side, which was in one of the beginning diagrams where you're talking about the different sides of the buildings. I think that the integrity of the project really comes in question when the treatment changes so drastically and becomes kind of like the backside of the building, which is really what both of those look like to me. So that needs a lot of work. Also, on the grand staircase, looking, I would really like to see section or elevations of both the north side and the south side, explaining if there's this history wall, really making sure that there is a human scale to the entire project. It sounds like there's going to be, but I'd really like to see that fleshed out. And also, on the larger steps going down towards Shellmount, I would like to -- I'm thinking we could green it up a little bit, too. It's -- I know it's relatively shady space, some sun in the afternoon, but maybe some of those seat walls could also be planters to bring people down. I really like the LED arbers, and I think that works to carry you along. But the weird-shaped kind of trapezoid bed, that main, on the main path of travel, is cutting it really tight. And I agree that it needs to be a main thoroughfare. And I like the whimsy, but it needs to be much greater access all the way across for actual moving of people and bicycles. The sign, I also think that it's a good idea to have a sign because you're on -- but I think it's a little large, so I'm guessing we could probably tone that down a little bit. So the last thing is the landscape plan definitely is fun and family-friendly. The activity areas are great, but the mix of the current proposal of bedrooms is not at all. And so that would really need to increase in terms of having two and three bedrooms to have room for families. It's our actual, from the October study session, we've gone backwards, so that's not really all right. And the last thing is the use of materials. I think that we're really looking to see a higher quality of materials, looking at the 3706 San Pablo project. There was moving, maybe we move along the lines of using some type of wood grained rain screen. And rain screen is basically just cement board with lines in it. Is that correct, or am I mistaken usually?
Necessarily.
No? Excuse me?
Many materials.
It can be many materials. So that would, I would need to see that fleshed out a little bit more to get on board with that. And also, I think the more sedate color combinations that we're looking to see more of in Emeryville, and more refinement in general.
Well, in the saved time, I'll just comment on a couple of things here. I'd like to see the elevations of these two buildings somehow match one another so it doesn't look like two separate buildings, as it seems to in this one perspective that we have on the screen right now. And I'm very pleased with the new path layout and the bridge relationship. That's it.
I think it's going in a great direction. I really like that the grand stair is there. I do think that path of travel needs to be a little bit more continuous, and I definitely agree that it needs the bike trough. So in order to do that and do it well and have people be able to move up and down those easily without conflict, you need to work the configuration out a little bit. The rear facade, I also agree, needs a little bit more work and more interest. And I definitely would like to see much more of a green roof element, not necessarily the Academy of Sciences, but I think that that would be a wonderful opportunity. Again, it'll be visible from a lot of different places, so -- and it's something that we should be doing, just because we should be doing those kinds of environmentally sensitive things. I'm really excited, I was very excited to see the exploration of materials around the walkway and the courtyards and the terraces and things like that. And I would love to see a little bit more richness of the materials on the apartment buildings themselves. And also, an upping, a lot of the buildings that we have that we're saying are family-friendly don't actually have real family-friendly outdoor spaces. It seems like you're creating that, so increasing the bigger units in order to make that work better makes a lot of sense. And I would also like to see some less studios, less one-bedrooms, and more units that would actually bring children in, that would be able to take advantage of those fun spaces.
Yeah, I appreciate a lot of what you're doing here. It's really coming together. The, I guess I only really have a few comments. The alignment of the crosswalk with the stairs, I think, is important. And even for what's across the street, it makes more sense than the current alignment or the offset alignment. If the -- I mean, this is a case where I think there is merit to having the sign. I think if you're going to have this public market sign, it really needs to be a work of art, needs to be something like the Grand Lake sign, maybe not quite that flashy and large, but something that people are all -- I mean, it basically represents the neighborhood, and that's where I think there's a lot of value in it. And then to the unit designs and really looking at some of the unit designs, the two bedrooms that look more like dormitory-style housing than anything that a family would ever rent or buy.
So, yeah, thanks for putting the grand staircase back in. I think it's a great addition. There are some, so the, I think because of that, you know, I mean, obviously, this is an entirely different proposal than we saw last time. I think there are some elements of the architecture that dropped out that I miss. One is kind of the, there were some really kind of irregular balconies on the last design that we saw that I really kind of liked, and I thought it was kind of playful and, you know, added some interest to the building. I think, you know, this building has gotten a lot more regular, and I think there's some room to play with it a little bit and be a little bit more irregular. I do, I think that the one thing I would really like to see is, so in this image that we're looking at here, that corner of the building is going to be a really key, it's a really key focal point of that building and a really key entrance to the whole marketplace. That's going to be how a lot of people arrive, and that's going to be one of the first, their first views of the marketplace. I'd really like to see a stronger corner on that building and, you know, maybe a more vertical feature or something on that corner. But it's just something to add, to add interest, I think. And I will also, Tom, I'm going to say, I will mourn the loss of the cube, but not for very long, but I do miss the cube. And then just lastly, the sign, I think, is kind of obscenely large and out of scale with the building. I, you know, I'm not the biggest fan of roof signs. I think, you know, if a roof sign, I mean, I think there's a lot of opportunities here to do something that is not a roof sign. I mean, you could put a wall sign on, you know, at the same elevation on the taller building. You could put a wall, you know, there's plenty of blank wall space on the lower building to put a wall sign as well. I think if you, you know, if you really must do a roof sign, I think something, you know, something more horizontally oriented is more in scale with the building, but I think right now it just looks really out of scale. And then also that those elevations that face the railroad tracks, I think there's a lot of room for improvement there. I understand the sound issues, and I thank you guys for working with the terrace residents on that issue. When that kind of all gets fleshed out, we'd really like to see you look at the three-dimensionality of that elevation. Right now, it's very flat. You know, the windows are kind of irregular and add some interest, but it looks pretty flat. It could just be the elevation that we're looking at. But, yeah, I would love to see you play with the three-dimensionality, the materials, the colors. I think there's a lot of room there to explore different techniques. But all in all, I think it's a good project. Love what you've done with the stairway and the, that pedestrian link. And, oh, I also want to echo the request for a bike trough. I think that's a great idea.
And one thing I just thought of, I mean, that's my gateways thing, but you could do some kind of a gateway sign when the bridge drops into the, you know, into that cut. It could be, it could even be lit up. It could be something, isn't there a boardwalk or pier somewhere?
Just march over the --
Yeah.
So I think that concludes this item.
The meeting?
What's that?
You want to extend the meeting?
Yeah. How long, how long do you guys think we can?
It seems to take a half hour at least.
An hour.
At least. I'm an IDL. I could do it. I'd like to get it done and put through, but I'm an IDL. I could stay up till 12:30, no problem.
I'm going to doze off if we stay a whole lot longer.
What's on the agenda for?
Not a lot. We have tentatively the Christie Avenue Park Final Development Plan for approval in February. We have a school moving into an existing building that needs a use permit because, from the Planning Commission, because of parking. And we have the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center Master Sign Program. I think it would be doable to continue the next item to the February meeting, although I'm not sure how the applicants feel about that.
I think the applicant wants to say something.
I have a thought. This building D is not nearly as complex to describe or to tell you the changes we've made or the requests that you had of us. I think I can get through it, and it's up to you. I think I can get through it in 10 minutes. And at least you'll have something, you can give us your feedback, and then we can work on it. It's up to you.
We could extend the meeting, say, till midnight, and if we're not done at midnight, then continue it to February.
Well, I would maybe propose this, that we maybe forego
Well, I would maybe propose this, that we maybe forego the applicant's presentation upfront, because I don't think the building is that complicated. We can take public comment, give comments, and then if they want to respond to any comments that we've given, then we can invite them back up at the end.
It works for me.
All right. Okay.
Would you like a staff presentation?
If it's brief.
I don't think it's necessary. I'd just like to make -- ask Tom one thing. The presentation that you have in your PowerPoint, is that exactly the same as the plans that the commission has, or have you made changes?
It's very, very close. Only -- it's only been upgraded, like landscape's been upgraded a bit. The family -- the family-friendly areas and the clustering of units in a -- in -- together to create some dynamic are a little bit more evolved. But I -- like I said, I can hit that -- ow. Yeah.
I think I could understand it just from what you said.
Yeah.
Can you --
Pretty good.
Can you get rid of this presentation from the screen?
Yeah.
And put up some representative graphic of the other building?
Yeah, I can, if I can find it.
Can Muro help him do that?
Chair Moss.
It should be on this presentation.
We do need to take a vote.
Do you want to take a vote?
Yeah. So let's just extend to midnight. Maybe we might even be able to get done before then, but I'll make a motion to extend to midnight.
I'll second it.
Perfect.
Any objections?
Okay, without objection. That was Moss and Keller, right?
Got it.
You're good.
So we're just going to take public comment?
Yeah, I guess we'll start with public comment. So if anyone -- if there's anyone who would like to speak on Marketplace Theater Site, or also known as Parcel D, please come forward. Anyone? Last call? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment. Commissioner Gunkel, do you want to get us started?
Sure. Yeah, I think on this one, some of the labeling was a little unclear or not as precise. So just making sure that that ribbed element continues, that you've got on two sides of that corner. Right now, it's shown on the renderings, but in some of the plans, it sort of stops at the second floor, third floor level. And just sort of defining what that is and describing the signage. I see the signage varying in different renderings. And what's on the sign? Is it really saying Avalon? The courtyard cutout, I mean, at one point, I think that made a lot of sense where it is -- where it's currently shown. I think when the grocery store was a couple -- like, shorter, and that cutout might have actually provided a visible, you know, visual connection through down to Shellmount. Now, I guess it's primarily a location that allows sunlight in at certain times of day. It's okay. I don't know. It just doesn't -- there's really no specific logic to where it's at anymore. I do like that there -- the -- I think there's a lot of the courtyard -- the active space looks good. I like that most of the courtyard-level patios have direct access to the courtyard. I do -- this is the main thing. I feel like the townhouses should be on 64th Street and the garage facing the parking lane. I don't think -- I mean, it's a parking lane. We're calling it a parking lane. There's a garage on the other side of it. That's where the garage -- if we're going to have a location where the garage is open to the exterior, it should be on that parking lane and not on 64th Street.
I think that also, if the townhouses were on 64th Street, they'd get a little bit more light when you come out of them, instead of being at the bottom of another tall building on the -- on a narrow street. I forget my comments. I actually, aside from -- aside from looking at that planter issue again and separating the building units with a lot of planting areas, it's hard to tell what's going on with the courtyard. I'd like to see -- be sure that there's a lot of access between the units and the courtyard. And when it gets late, I get a little bit fuzzy, I think. I had one more. I had one more, but I'll pass, and it'll come back to me.
Use your microphone.
Well, again, I'd like to see a little more continuity in the elevations and its relationship to the apartment city -- the building where the market is going to be located so that there's some continuity along the street. You get up to the next block and going between 64th and 65th, and the elevations are very consistent, and they wrap around on the side. And I think that's an important feature that should be looked into here.
Yeah, it's actually pretty hard to read from the -- just the scale of the design, what's going on at ground level, but you know our drill. We want no blank walls. We want it to be activated, pedestrian-friendly. Generally like the materials. I think the colors, again, they're a little bit contrasty, could be more calm. And I also was thinking that same thing about that cutout, that it doesn't really mean anything now. Not that I don't think it's still not a reasonable thing to have light and air in that space, but not quite the same as what it was. And once again, I think more family-friendly units, less one bedrooms and more three bedrooms would really make this much more of a family-friendly project. And I actually look forward to seeing the fruits of your collaboration with the person that we've -- the city has -- has made as our design consultant. And so I look forward to seeing a little bit more work in that department on this project.
Okay. Once again, a much improved project. I think this building is a vast improvement over the previous. I love everything about the southeast corner. I agree with Commissioner Gunkel that the -- they need to be consistent. What I'm seeing here on our computer screen is what I want to see in the finished project. I think that's just really neat. The vertical elements with the long skinny windows, the corner balconies, the large corner storefront windows, or the double-height lobby, it's all just great. I feel the overall architecture is something I would see in San Francisco, Portland, or Seattle. Again, there are places I disagree and where I -- there are places that the DCC and I diverge and converge. Again, the DCC has concerns about the materials and colors. I value that the architect used restraint in the placement and selection of colors. The colors highlight the architectural details without being a substitute for the architectural details. And the materials, we keep asking for something other than stucco, and here we get it, and I don't know what the concern is. Maybe it would be helpful if staff gave us in their report more particulars of what they didn't like, rather than just saying they didn't like something, so that I wouldn't have to kind of be the bad guy. Where the DCC and I converge on this is the setting of the townhouse and the adjacent communities. I think everything is in their current location is where it needs to be on the ground floor. I understand what people are saying about 64th Street. 64th Street is on the north side. It's dark. It's wet. In the middle of the day, you go down that street, this time of year, the street is wet, even if it hasn't been raining. Emmy Apartments, all their services are on that side of the building, all their utility boxes, their driveway, the driveways coming out of -- what is the new name of the Carton Artistry? Their driveways come out of there. And if we want the activity in the public market and we want 63rd Street to be activated, this is where the townhouses belong, in my opinion. So I think the way everything is set up in the building currently in this plan is just where they should stay. I think it's really good. Trying to catch up here with myself. I think the upper courtyard is very well done. It has a great layout, as well as the placement of the user amenities. I also like how it opens up to the south. It may not have a view, but it's going to have sunshine the part of the -- most part of the day. And I think the program in that area, the use of that area is pretty well-planned. And I like the really big round lounge things, almost like a cruise ship. Additionally, I really like the setback treatment at the top of the building. There's a rhythm and a cohesive feeling to the entire building, while it still provides some unique and smartly placed, strong architectural elements. Where before this was the weakest building of the entire project, I now think it's the better of the two that I've been able to comment on tonight. A couple of the details to consider is make sure that the bike shop and pet room, again, have windows. And maybe the metal screens covering the parking area of the garage on 64th Street could be patterned rather than just that square, simple mesh. So maybe something like on the Order of Oak Walk or what they were proposing on the Affordable Housing tonight down there. But for me, I feel the project is pretty much a go, and it's probably one of the best projects I've seen from Avalon. I like how the -- I'm not really in agreement with Commissioner Cardoza about this separation. I like that they have a rhythm. They kind of match, but they're not matchy-matchy. I mean, it's going to be next to the Emmy Apartments, which themselves are very different. So I kind of like how it blends, but yet it becomes kind of different buildings in different neighborhoods, and I don't want everything to be really matchy-matchy. And I just -- the picture we're looking at here, I just think this elevation is just amazing. I think it's really, really good. Thank you.
I just have kind of two comments really. I think it's a good building. The elevations are strong. I just -- I think I would -- I think -- I don't know how to articulate this, but on the Shellmount, I think for me, the Shellmount elevation is kind of the weakest, and I'd like to see a little work on that. When I look at it, it's, you know, so you have this sort of tower feature that's a little bit taller, and then after that, the building just, you know, it's a little bit kind of rectilinear. And I, you know, when I look at that elevation, it -- I think, oh, well, the building needs kind of an accent color. But then I look at the other elevations, and I'm like, oh, well, that bronze is your accent color. So there's just something about that elevation that I think it could -- I don't know what it is, if it's -- it needs a little, you know, maybe some sort of horizontal break in that larger portion of the building or something, but I think it needs just a little something to add some interest. And then the, you know, on the -- what is this now? The north elevation, I think maybe you could find, you know, one additional place to add that accent color on that elevation. I think the, you know, the elevation is good. I just -- I think a little additional color wouldn't hurt it. It's a little black and white, that side. And then, what was my -- oh, my other -- my only other comment is, as I stated before, I'm going to state again, I think that the townhome units on the ground floor should not be loaded from the rear as well. You know, in order to, you know, in order to come from the garage to the, you know, the front of the building and enter your unit, you'd have to walk about an extra 30 feet, probably, to -- if they didn't have that access in the back. So I don't really see it as an inconvenience or anything like that, but I think it'll really add to the neighborhood to have that activity on the street, kind of everywhere. So those are my comments.
I remembered my other comment was about the unit mix again. It's over 50% studios and one bedrooms, and it needs to have more larger units. That's it.
And I just -- though, I think the thing that's making this rendering pop is the fiber cement rain screens are really appearing kind of glossy. And a lot of times, that's just a rendering thing, and there are plenty of fiber cement rain screens that aren't glossy, and there are some that are glossy now, some that look like wood paneling. I think getting that -- having it not only be a different color than the plaster, but actually feel like a different texture than the plaster in that glossiness is going to be key.
I promised 10 minutes, and I'll do my very best. First of all, I appreciate the commentary. This is exactly what we need from you. The really cool part about this site D is it's square. So based on all of your comment, we have taken this building and we have rotated it to every single direction and taken all those functions and put them on every single side. And this is where we settled. And we settled on this for a big reason. The big issue was activate Shellmount. So that's where we are going to put windows, and that's where the bike shop, the leasing, our activity zones are. We want Shellmount to be that activity zone. The townhouses going down 63rd and then turning the corner on the Market Street, the New Market Street, we wanted to reinforce that corner. And we initially didn't do that because across the street was perpendicular parking into a garage. But the city is working with us and with the master developer to create parallel parking, wider sidewalks, more trees. It now becomes a lovely, quiet residential street. So -- and it is -- it's not south-facing, but as the sun comes around, it's going to catch more sun than if we did 64th. So that was the reason we didn't do 64th, and the parking lot and the stuff across the street, that was another reason. So the ground plane, we think, is very, very strong. The cut in the building, we put that there because there's a potential plaza that delivers us right to that front, and hopefully, as you come down the street, that gives a break in the big mass of the building, it does let sun into that courtyard. We have more three bedrooms in this building. We have really tried to cluster those three bedrooms together so that the family activities are stronger. And the units that we showed you before are the intention of the units that we'll use here. The materials that we're using, I actually don't disagree. I think a couple of the elevations need a little more work, and that's why we're here to talk to you. And so maybe on Shellmount, we need -- and this is me, too. I think we need to look at that very, very strong corner and then create something that's sympathetic to that going down Shellmount. It was meant to be a response to the industrial manufacturing across the railroad, and then the rest of the buildings created these different buildings that face different zones, like the residential zone, the commercial zone, the park zone. And so we were trying to do that. So it's the same family of materials, used slightly differently, but turning the corners, and that was the intention. Is there any other questions that I'm missing? We're pretty excited about this building, too, because it's made a giant leap forward. And together, the two projects, I think, are very -- should be an extremely good addition to the city. And I can't tell you how excited we are to get to this point with you. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Are there any commissioner comments? All right. Then let's adjourn and go home. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah.
We did it.